That. If we lose the stream, I'll be able to post the video later. So on that note, um, we are holding our budget meetings on, we're allowing them to stream on YouTube because of the town where we feel like having these discussions in public, it's really accessible is really important because we're talking about tax dollars and the town and expenditures. And typically, these meetings, though, are less structured, more discussion, there, there can be more back and forth, they can be a little bit more confusing. So, um, just trying to explain that to the public, but also keep in mind that this is an open meeting and we're talking about departments and departments include personnel. We just want to be really mindful that we don't, um, cross over into the territory of things we don't, that shouldn't be shared public, such as like personnel issues or anything that would otherwise be something that we would hold in a confidential space. So just be mindful us all and giving this announcement ahead of every department meeting. Um, just because they will be on YouTube indefinitely. So with that, um, I just, uh, does everyone, is everyone on the page in your budget for the assessor's office? Um, then, Jeremy, would you like to sort of present your budget, your department request to us?
Can I also get you here? Okay, so through three years here as the assessor, and right just to the means for the assessment office, this is what I'm coming up with and proposing. So I was put in for a full-time assessor, a full-time assistant, and going to a part-time clerk. That type of setup staffing level in the assessment office here in town Rochester with how busy this town is, five thousand parcels, more, people coming to the town every year, it's just growing rapidly. I was informed after I took the job, I didn't know at the time that my government director recommended Rochester, get a full-time assessor. By the most accountable property director. About a year or so into this, I sort of mentioned to us, I think they need a full-time, she's like, oh yeah, went down and said that, and he was like, so, why didn't somebody tell me that? So, so you've needed a full-time assessor here for a long time now. This town is not a real quiet little town that it was in the seventies, eighties, early nineties. And my parents moved here in nineteen ninety, I moved here in nineteen ninety-nine. You know, the town didn't really change from ninety to ninety-nine. But nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand nine to twenty nineteen, it's just, it's changed rapidly. So, so I'm presenting, you know, full-time assessor, full-time assistant, and part-time clerk in order to create and maintain a fair and equitable assessment role that we're supposed to be creating.
Jeremy, this is the number you put in the budget that's in here, that's for full-time? That, right? I just want to make sure that that was, you have to raise that as per, okay, with the hours increase and.
Correct, yeah.
Great.
And when you say clerk, it's the field worker?
Yeah, clerk, field worker, is that, I don't know, field worker.
Joanne is assessor's aide, that's the competitive position that you were appointed permanent to. The non-competitive position is the assessor field worker.
That's what prior, it was basically.
Yeah, there's, there's a competitive deputy assessor. I did take the test for that as well.
But the new position is, when is that field worker?
Well, I guess that's a question, I guess that's. I guess that's a question, were you thinking that there would be a new position that the current assessor aide would be moving into, or you would stay in that role, there being another position?
So Joanne has an interest in advancing the assessment field there and, you know, I think by creating assistant assessor, field worker, data collector, whatever you want to call it there, you know, Joanne would be willing to step up to that position. And then we would just need a part-time clerk. So then Joanne would fill in between the days that the part-time clerk's not there. Going into those duties as well as any assessors, you know, assistant assessor duties, you know, some data collection, whatever's necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, we just don't, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't grasp that there would be, so the assessor field worker is, I think we might have to look at what positions there are, we might have to request a position.
That description.
Yeah, but I, we support, we support, I think.
Yeah, we just have to make sure it's in our, um, what do they call it, Aaron, our.
Position, it's not in our position, you told us, but, yeah, we have to make sure.
We have to have the right description.
Yeah, something like assistant assessor.
Yeah, so we just need to make sure that's in the C D R S or product line, but proper, but we're not, I'm not opposed to that.
And I'm, I'm just tying it to what, what's the budget currently says.
Sure.
I agree with. Just making the names align with the positions.
Yes, yeah, I'm tying with the numbers.
Many different names and we can't call them different things appropriately, so.
Yeah, and I, the assessor's aide that is considered because it's competitive whereas the assessor field worker is not, we consider.
So.
But deputy assessor is.
Yes, yes. So I was just explaining that the titles we have in here didn't match what you're proposing, yeah, that's all, we're trying, just.
Because Joanne has taken the civil service assistant deputy assessor. That's that.
Okay.
This is on the list there, we have the county.
Right.
Yeah, so then the, us having to make the request and doing the process to have it added and then we have to go through, I believe we still would have to go through the three rule of someone who scored higher, if he weren't the first four, he's sort of thought of that. The rule of three, whatever they call it in civil service, where you have the top three and then move, um, I have no doubt that you can be the one that just.
Okay, so. Okay, um, and then I think we on the equipment line, I think one thing that you had said, we talked about verbally, is if you do have a third person in the office, we would probably have to increase that for getting another workstation.
Or, yes, yeah, yeah, is that your desk room, whatever else it would need there?
Because this represents, um, what we have in the budget represents just equipment upgrades that to, would be, would be needed for two people in the office, not third.
Correct.
Okay, so is that clear?
Yes, yeah, yeah, you mean under the desk.
Yeah, so that's a little, I think we'd have to decide about having a third. Do you, but should we go through the whole budget quickly and then go back and talk about these things, or do you want to talk about each section?
Let's go through it all.
I think it'd be easier to go through it all.
Okay.
So.
Great.
As far as equipment goes, I'm going to say this, that same thing I always do is you have not spent any of your six hundred yet this year. Um, and you should use some of that six hundred if you can, like, definitely at least get a chair before the year turns over, if we approve the extra position, like, use it or lose it, is how I handle any empty budget line that I've expended if you're asking for an increase. So I think that we should try to get what we can out of this. Yeah, exactly, I gotta do a little inventory to see what you can set at that, um, first, but I'm not, obviously, then someone needs a workstation to work out, that's a test.
And then where, so with office supplies, that was just based on rate of usage.
Um, anticipating much more for this next year, following year, might be some more with the new value going up. Let's figure out exactly how much cars handling, what we got to handle for the year.
Right. Right. Um, so this next line, professional services, that's for the revow, so that's what in our contract we would be, that's what's due in our contract for twenty twenty-five. Um, and we are, I do have a correspondence out regarding a payment plan. We're kind of on, we're not really on a payment plan, I guess we're kind of on a payment plan, but.
Yeah, we're only getting annual contract plan, but not per se.
Something that could, um, that, or doing, we could also do a bond, which is what we're, I'm considering right now to.
Yeah, so that's heard from a lot of assessors helping.
Is in total, yeah, it's four, around four hundred?
Four twenty.
Four twenty.
Over the three years, yeah.
I mean, right now, as we stand, town has very.
We have no debt.
Yeah, we have no debt, so I think four hundred thousand to try to help all, like, doing a bond to help off balance this, it's not like, because it's two, right, we have to do two chunks of these payments and then three, and so, yeah, so.
We took one last year.
No, we've been paying, um, monthly this year, and there was a ban budgeted. Um, but we haven't needed to do that with our current budget, so, um, for this, though, I think we do need to figure something out.
Well, so what, what's the balance going to be for twenty-six?
Um.
It's not this much.
No, it's going to be a lot less.
Um, yes.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be like under seventy-five.
Under seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think instead, like, I know last year, this year's payment, um, we have settled, but I think for this remaining of these three hundred thousand instead of, there's already a lot of upgrades that are penalized that we have to do in town for infrastructure, and I think having no debt, I think that us tantalizing the idea of doing a bond for such a small amount, um, compared to our whole budget, you know what I mean? Um, and our revenues, I think it's the more physically responsible idea to explore than trying to put all of this on the taxpayer or our boards or our department's responsibility to try to make up. And then we can deviate that over the next couple of years into that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to flag that because we'll be talking about that revenue, but that's the total in the contract. Um, I also, I do want to see if it is, if it's more cost-effective to do, to work with them on a payment plan versus a bond, then I'll investigate those options to whichever makes the most sense. Okay, so Board of Assessment Review, um, that is what it was for twenty twenty-four. Um, so, that we do, it's one meeting, we do a single payout, I'm looking at it now, realizing.
And it's a training also.
It's three hundred dollars upon completion of the, um, the grievance, and then there's some. So I did not increase that, I just realized, and then that, the software line, that's, that's what you told me, right, six forty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, can you remind me?
It's an appraisal software program, it's called ACI. So every year we get the grievances, whatever the Board of Assessment Review denies, most of the time they file a SCAR, small claims assessment review, which they have to do, it's like an informal hearing we have to do. And when I go to that, I basically have to do an appraisal, you know, the hearing officer, everybody wants to see the adjustments on the grid and everything like that. So, but, you know, right now I'm just kind of doing it all on the Excel spreadsheet, but having the actual program would make it much cleaner, nice, tighter, faster for me to do it.
So annual license?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, six forty-nine a year there. It's just maybe a lot faster, I mean, spare time consuming just to do it all with Excel. Just have the ability to put location maps, photos, everything in and stuff and make it organized and that might case for the hearing officer.
Public notices. And then all. That's for the role?
Yep, for the role, and we send out a public notice for, um, property data verification, we can pay for, whether we do tenement assessment role or final assessment role.
I think those are the main ones. Yeah. Okay, and then the education conference, that would be for the three, for three staff? Or is that just to, I forgot, sorry, I don't have your.
It's, uh, possibly for the three, definitely for the two, and the, so there's one-day seminars, you know, a hundred dollars a pop, so that could include the staff of three as well there, yeah. A little strange because the way, you know, right now, I'm structured with the three towns.
Yes. Yes, yeah, yeah, so that, yes, yeah, so that is one, yeah, one thing to, um, keep in mind with some of these, with that expenditure, for example, in particular. Mileage would be another one.
Yeah, so, so I think that would be good to start, see where it is, you know, for three, but.
Yeah.
Maybe most lately.
Yeah. Um, and then postage. Um, does that cover everything that we'll need to do with the revow in terms of postage?
Uh, like I said, this year, we're not going to really have anything to do with this year.
It'll be twenty twenty-six.
I think our handles most of that, just a couple of things we do, but I'll figure that out.
Yeah. By then, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to ask you about education and conferences. I totally understand, sure, we split it right now into three different municipalities. Are there any that you know of that you can both pay for now, this year, because you still have twenty-four hundred dollars on that budget that you know of?
I don't think that's true, we, um, extended all of that after eight thirty-one.
Oh, okay.
Because we paid for.
We bought conferences.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yes, I remember.
Yeah, we, yeah, we paid for things, though.
Never mind.
Yeah. There might, we can all look, there might be a little bit in there, but it's not.
Yeah, I'm going to see there's a bit of, like, one to what people, like, you know, registration fee beforehand, something to try, if anywhere scheduled. But, yeah, I forgot what we just.
You're able to go in fresh and just come up before you're.
Okay, um, so, I just want to, I'll open it up to the board.
I, I mean, I'm fine with. These requests, I think they're all valid, I think they're all needed, I think that the biggest thing that we hear in public comment and, um, from our employees and just people in general, is how much our town's really in general, so no matter what, whether we agree with the grants or not, in any form, we still need to make sure our month pay, our care. Um, so I think this is an important department that we need to make sure is staffed so that we do get to that equalization rate where everyone is at the same rate and we're all being, everyone's being charged responsibly in town.
We're not, we're not proposing getting year.
Well, that, so, that would be a general software expenditure. And I did not put that in the budget as to buy it with the flyover, it was about twenty-seven thousand. But we might have an opportunity that I'm, I'm going to look at that, um, could be a little bit less depending on what the revow software is that we could add on to, if that makes sense. And in which case, I think we should consider getting it at that, the lower rate, so, I don't want to quote numbers, but it's a lot less than.
It's like sixty-five hundred dollars for the year.
Yeah. But, so I did not include that, just that was a decision I made when I was putting the tentative budget together, but after I spoke with Jeremy, I think we would be able to find that amount, you know, that's a new. I know that it, yeah.
To give an example of how great it is, it was before tenement role, over in Marble Town, we have it there. Uh, so going through my review sheet, so review sheet, I have all the building that's on, I started with the old ones from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty that I closed out, most of them were pools, pool houses. If I got in the car and drove around and probably about seven hours of me driving, I wouldn't have seen half of what I saw sitting there in the air, yep, that pool's done, that pool's done, that pool's out of stock. Pick up a three million dollars on the assessment role in like two hours. So, just saves time running around, I didn't have to turn in money for gas mileage. Uh, sit there, get that done, and then move on to other things and get other things done.
That's not like our town is eighty square miles.
Only eighty-eight point nine.
It's not like we have over, we drive four miles in town.
That was a little shocking to me when I came to Newburgh, who used to drive around the city of Newburgh, which is four square miles. I would drive four miles and get a hundred and seventy-six photos, year and year seventy-six miles and get four photos.
It's surprising how long you can drive and stuff.
There's five people on the board this week.
Yeah.
Yes.
And do we have an alternate at all, or?
We, currently, we have vacancies.
But it's a full H U V five, one alternate. There's no, there's no alternate right now then. Just trying to figure out. Yeah, and give a increase to go out here.
So, I think, you know, the, the most obvious change is, there's a significant increase in personnel um, cost on full-time assessor, adding additional position. Um, you know, we're, we're looking as we look at this budget to add positions in some other areas of town um, that needed, you know, code enforcement's a concern, um, looking at somebody to help manage a buildings. Um, so, I guess first, first question, high level, uh, what's the immediate need, like, let's say we wanted to bring in, now I'm going to mix up titles or whatever, but this, this this field worker position, or the part-time position, or whatever, whatever the additional position is to help spread that load out. Um, what is the immediate impact and role of that person going to be if we have to make a fall between, do we get somebody to help buildings, or do we get a position to do that? Um, and the second question is, is it, is it possible to wait on that additional part-time position to see where things are at with the revow, with full-time position, and then maybe look at adding that uh, in the following year, once the revow's closer to complete, we have more of a need there. Just looking at overall budget, I'm going to make decisions about which positions we want to go.
Sure, yeah, so, obviously, the most important would be full-time assessor to start.
Agreed, that was going to be my question, do you want to go full-time or do you want the third?
Have someone, the assistant, that is very, I feel very important to have there. Could we transition into that? Possibly, the next year or two there. But I think definitely once the revow is done, in order to be able to maintain a fair and equitable goal going forward and utilize the revow that we just spent so much money on, this is the staffing that we're really going to need to maintain that going forward. So without this, basically in two years, that revow's garbage, you just spent four hundred thousand dollars and it's it's not being maintained, it's good code by the wayside, it's property data's changing every single day. And, um, we've read some of this stuff here, I'm finding houses that have never been put on the assessment roll since nineteen ninety-eight or older, twenty-five years. Couple of weeks this past month, and, you know, several houses a week, I'm finding.
And, and with that staff, do you think, I mean, is that going to enable us to maintain the revow and maintain the roles, you know, for a good period of time, a good chunk of time, like, what's the, what's the threshold where we need to add another person?
Yeah, I think that would hold for a while, for sure, you know, unless for some reason all of a sudden we start getting very big numbers, lots of subdivisions put into the town, which is probably not going to happen here.
Yeah.
You know, start getting thirty, fifty, you know, lots of divisions and stuff put in. But, uh, as we're just about forty-nine hundred parcels, size of the town, eighty square miles, and let's take into consideration how it came up with two and a half employees there.
Where I'm at, just overall with the budget and what we, what I know our tax levy is going to be, where I'm at is what I would like to do is to, I would like to plan on having you both full-time and hold off on the third position until twenty twenty-six. That's where I'm at, so I wanted to propose that with you, and I also wanted to see if that still will allow for the job advancement if, without the third person to, should we like still plan for that? Will that give you, like, could you create some time for you both to be in the field, or like the office would be closed, or, like, would that still be possible?
It's kind of, probably full-time bumper up, but hold on on the part-time clerk for now there.
Yeah, and in the meantime, I'm going to continue to take classes and that, but I think for the revow, it is very important, I can, you know, continue learning, um, yeah.
Yeah, we can break out something that's really. Do this.
I think if you guys are comfortable with that, I totally hear Aaron's point, um, in the budget, so, yeah, if you guys think that starting like January next, you know, the following year twenty-six, to have, like, once we get through this next, this year, set of the revow, what we need to do for that, that, that is still appropriate for making sure you can get what we need with the revow done, we'd be going to full-time and then you would take on us and doing a little bump up of responsibility.
Yes.
Cool, all right, as long as I'm fine.
And then maybe, we'll try really hard.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and we, I think that, I think that's a good trend.
So to have them actually do aerial imagery is expensive, but we can get the software for cheaper without doing the aerial imagery.
So they cover about two-thirds or so of the town Rochester now.
Oh, so we'd have to do a collection for the remaining third.
Yeah, so exactly, that's where the flyover, we come in, we need ones that they're in charge of the flyover. Like I said, I have an email out to Ryan at car, because they're going to be doing some flyovers for the rebound. So I'm trying to find out if they're using year map or pictometry. Close question to us, if they're using year map, that'd be great, because in the future, then, you know, move forward with that and have the whole town covered and stuff, so, I'd be able to hear back from Ryan there, but, uh, trying to find out there. Uh, but it's kind of the same thing over Marble Town, two-thirds, three-quarters of the town, Marble Town's covered. It's one chunk, northern west corner where it's, they haven't done the flyover, but, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's I found it very beneficial for Marble Town, and Richard supervisor over there loves it. So once, any, the town gets every department can use it, so building department can use it.
That's not like a perceived thing?
No, no, anybody, any department can use it, so really it shouldn't come out of my budget, it should be, come out of the general budget day or whatever, you know, what Marble Town did. Um, the latest photos are from September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the last photos in Ulster Parcel Bureau are from April, March twenty-one.
Yeah.
And it's better resolution.
Oh, so.
We used it once to verify, um, you know, to do an address for nine-one-one. You need a specific location of where the driveway is going to, and Ulster County Parcel Bureau was.
Ulster County were tremendous.
Though we used, yeah, and that was very helpful, because it's up-to-date information.
Do they do their own revisit? Like on their, like, will they fly, like, the two-thirds that they've done?
Yeah, that's what September twenty, tenth photo was, they flew over again, September tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Do you know what the revisit rate is for there?
Uh, it looks like it's yearly. I was hoping this would be twice a year, like one over Newburgh, to make more of a, remember that they're flying. It's typically insurance, and you can see the stuff that pay for the flyovers. So that's why they can sell it for so expensive to assessment, six thousand dollar a year subscription, it's like unheard of. Pictometry, which everyone had before, it's like, you know, tens of thousands of dollars a month or something like that. It's crazy what pictometry was.
So I just wanted to make, so at Marble Town, you only got, they didn't do a flyover, they only got the software.
They just got the software.
Okay, and that's helped, still been helpful, just doing that without doing that bigger chunk. But, yeah, but having two-thirds is still more helpful than having no third, it's like, it, so we didn't want to do a flyover this year, and like, I want to next year, but at least got you, you know, the, at least the two-thirds we have pronounced, first software that, that's still better than nothing, again.
You're lucky, you know, and then to the flyover, so.
Yeah, and then it'll be, yeah, exactly, this time this year or somewhere, all right, yeah, people look at. All right, yeah, people look at.
Do you, uh, have you seen a footprint of what they covered?
Uh.
Do you know where the gap is? Or is it just like you search and then you're like, oh, it's over there?
No, it's kind of Sampson Boulevard ways. And then northwestern segment of town.
Okay. I wonder if the state has any funding to do that.
You don't know of anything like that.
There is like not a lot, well, there's not a lot for us.
Joey, I tried to get the county to go with near map on a brick scat here, cause I, actually he got Orange County, you go with near map. Cause that's time they were using pictometry. Uh, we in the city of Newburgh, we got near map, cause pictometry was, photos are worse than they were in two thousand and six. So we ended up getting picked up near map, showed it to Eric Rusher, who was the county director in Orange County, uh, he loved it. He ends up contacting near map, they contracted with them, picked up a chunk of the bill and then sent two thousand dollar bill to all the towns. Instead of the five or six thousand, so I tried to do that here with Ulster County. They got together meeting, no, too expensive.
Um, we, okay, so if we're now talking about two people in the office for this year twenty-five. Um, will it keep with the equipment at a thousand? Is that? Okay, should? Um, we have, and then the education conference, should we keep that at four?
Yeah, I think it was really for the two, for the most part there.
Okay, and then the other thing I'm seeing, which is that it, it's just, um, we didn't do any increase for board assessment review, and I did that for the other. The others. Um.
FYI, it's a pretty good stipend move compared to over town.
Yeah.
You've got a pretty happy one already.
Right, don't typically get, are you talking about the raise for the stipend or?
Yeah.
Oh, cause I, I don't think it's changed in the last several years.
Yeah, I don't think it has, okay, okay. You wanna leave it?
It changed quite a few dollars, by a few dollars possibly for the new.
Yeah, I think we have money for deals combined in.
Yeah.
It's satisfying.
I'm, I'm fine leaving it where it's at. Okay, so, anything else? Okay, we are doing a holistic review of this pay scale, so I might come back. Of course, with updates after we look at that all together and adopt the pay scale. Um. So, very great. Thank you.
I'm the guy in the LA of Institute.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, nice.
Great.
Thank you, great, thank you. Okay, so I don't have any other departments scheduled.
Um, as you have clearly made the picture question.
Yeah.
Um, for postage across the board. We use a machine, use a postal weight machine.
Yes.
Can we take the balance of the whole budget of this year and pre-load it at the end of the year?
That's a good, I can, we.
Cause right, we prepay for.
No, we pay as we go. And then we get billed for, we get billed for what we do. Now, well, it's a, it gets loaded, but not, it's not like we prepay a certain amount and then it gets used up and then we.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta, you.
Yeah.
Paying them back, kind of like.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's a limit to that, but I can.
I can see if they can increase it, so I might try to like collectively. You know, it's like, cause we have a good like thousand between all the departments, but I'm looking at, I don't think that the assessors have as much to mail, but they're, they mail the rest of the year, but um, since their period their assessment period is over, but they have like three hundred dollar change, and I know that that can change every year, that will probably be on their outpost, but maybe to try to.
Yeah.
Get a couple bucks back.
Yeah. Okay, um, I think that's good, um. So we, I think we should just go through until we wanna stop and switch over to the the planning board appointments.
Okay.
Okay, so, yes. I don't know, but it is a general government support.
We do.
I'm recording this and I'll post it.
Yeah, the internet's backwards.
I, I don't know that it's streaming, but I have it, I'm recording it, so I'll post it. It took us at our last meeting, we're difficult to stream. Okay, we are on page thirty-five. I'm sorry, on file. Okay, so I wanna start, I wanna have a discussion about the vehicle. Um, so we do have this money budgeted this year. I'm considering trying to, um, we've talked about having a town vehicle that would be at the town hall. Currently, all vehicles are assigned to specific employees, so code enforcement and buildings. Um, we've had this sort of idea of having a town vehicle, there used to be one. But it would be a shared vehicle that has the town seal on it that would be something people could check out. The main departments that would utilize it, I believe, would be um, the assessor's office. The code enforcement office when they, if they are ever out three people at a time. Um, and then the recreation department, um, and then it would be, you know, perhaps buildings when they don't need to use a truck. So, um, that's what I'm considering doing, and then I'm considering reducing this line significantly. The only other vehicle need that we have specifically is a, a four-wheel-drive capable vehicle for the constable department. And we're gonna review that, that whole budget next week, but um, I've been told I could reduce this quite a bit. So I just wanted to get your feedback right now, or we can make a decision about the preliminary that line in the preliminary, preliminary budget next week. But instead of carrying over, we could at least do the purchase of that this year, cause the funds are in the budget.
How many constable cars do we have now?
Two. We have two. And they're sedans.
Yeah, I think we should expand it this year. I think we've cut this vehicle every year I've been on the board or taken that budget line and appropriated it somewhere else, um. So I think it's important that we listen to our employees and get a vehicle or for the end of this year, early next year. Um, I'm fine with leaving it until we do the concealerary, um, meeting and know where we're at for a vehicle there also, um. But yeah, I think that if we're only, if we buy one this year, then we're looking for, um, cause it, does it have to be a four-wheel-drive car for the shared one?
No.
Do we know what exactly we're looking for, like, you know?
I mean, I think it's something, I, I do know, I've gotten a lot of feedback, um. So we, I think a small, like SUV, something that with a hatchback because of the mostly just to accommodate the recreation park's usage. But otherwise, it's just, needs to be a fuel-efficient just passenger, just for driving from, you know, not, you, not using for hauling things or.
And then, Savory wants to do four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
Does it have to be a large-scale SUV or like back the mid-size four-wheel drive?
They have idea, I, and we could reduce it. I was told under ten thousand for that, um, for that vehicle that they're. Yeah. So I thought we should wait and know that.
Yeah, let's move on to it. Look, Michael, you first and then.
The other, the other thing that I'm pursuing aggressively is the nicer to funding. Which we, is a kind of a, a way for us to get completely to get funding for vehicles a hundred percent, but they would be EVs. Um, so that's, I'm not putting that in the budget because we aren't there yet, but that's in another way that we could use other funding opportunities to purchase fleet vehicles. Um.
Is, is that a reasonable beginning with one vehicle that serve all those needs, assess your code enforcement?
Um, the only. Yes.
Marking on it?
Yes. Yeah. They do.
That's why I was wondering how many, like, would the. I'm wondering if they can still, like, needs both sedans, if we get them, that's, that's why I wanna reach out.
Oh.
For assessor and.
Well, I will say, yeah. Yeah, these are great questions, okay.
So yes, I, I think there's a bigger conversation.
Okay.
Till we know where.
I know really what they're talking about with that is winter and when they have to go up the trails end or sometimes there's uh, calls around like, Artman, that are like, you really need like something, bigger tires, um. Not necessarily the patrolling, so, um.
Right.
But I will say that one vehicle shared between all those departments sounds like if people would not be able to utilize it.
Yeah, I think we have to make like some type of schedule of like days for each department, maybe to make it more easy so that it does get utilized fairly if we don't.
So our plan is gonna be to reduce this line significantly, but let's wait until we have that.
Yeah, I would just like a picture with the, you know, the company, we'll take one of those, potentially repurpose it. If they don't need it, you know what I mean, like.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know. I don't, yeah, I don't know if that is necessarily possible, but I think, well, I will put we have budgeted for a vehicle for this year. I will put that on an agenda, I will get that, um, moving. And then we will, we're not gonna, I'm gonna leave this for next week, but we will focus on this vehicle line this week. Okay, so um, so central garage, um, this is all the non-highway department vehicles. Um, so we have, um, and um, it's not just, yes, it's all non-highway department vehicles. Um, so we do our own in-house maintenance. So that's what a lot of this is, um, and I did review this with Jeff. He and I put this together based on our projections of, of things, so, um. Do you guys wanna go through it line by line, um?
I just have uh, some tires.
Yes.
We have.
A thousand dollars.
Yes, but we have two constabulary cars, code enforcement. Um, and then the highway, the road truck, right? And as we mentioned, that was true.
Yeah, we.
And I'm just trying to make all of the passenger car.
Jeff and I did, we did the same thing when we sat down and we, um, he checked to see which ones need tires, and that's what we came up with in this budget.
The sixteen hundred with the thousand from this year?
If, yeah, we are planning on buying tires this year.
Since the hundred on four through December.
Okay, all right.
Objective, just. Borrow the girl at the rec center, since.
And then this, we, we raised that up because we do have two, all the, all of our vehicles except for the constant cars are, um, bigger, um, vehicles.
Yes, yeah, no, I'm.
But, um, yeah, we did, we did like an inventory of them vehicles, came up with, which we would need some tire replacements.
Same with parts. Can Jeff just like pre-order oil filters for all of our vehicles for next year? Cause there's definitely gonna be that, right? Four thousand left in that budget line. For, I'm sure there's a little less now since this is August, but whatever we have left, like windshield wipers.
Yeah.
Oil filters, whatever we can order with that four thousand this year that are like preventative maintenance that we know is gonna happen, air filters. We should max that out on the vehicles we have in our team before the end of the year, um. I think the twenty-five hundred's appropriate moving forward that you moved it to, so the new one, for the new budget, but I think we should, we should at least try to use up some of that five thousand.
Yeah, it's kind of a crapshoot, like we, in twenty twenty-three, we spent over five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. It was less than three, so we kind of split the difference.
Yeah, well, and I think the twenty-five hundred is a safe number, especially if we do get like two oil filters per vehicle we have right now in stock, like that'll take a chunk of that out of those preventative maintenance, like normal maintenance on car.
Yeah.
Um, but I think the twenty-five hundred will be good with that, considered.
Yeah, um, Michael? Did you have anything in that section?
No.
Okay, so I'll just, I'm gonna, we're not making any changes. To that little section. Okay, so this, um, the next is central communication.
I don't sell them through yet.
So we, oh, I meant to bring, I think I have that back up. This, um, I increased the number of phones in this proposal to include an additional phone for the code enforcement office, cause it'll be in the field. And, hold on, this is easy enough now, it's, it's thirty-nine ninety-nine. So it's four, four eighty. So I, this also includes two tablets, so it's, um, eleven. This is for eleven. And we current, this is three, this is an addition of three.
It's forty-five dollars.
Yeah, I can all, we'll double check, but I think this is for one more in highway. Oh, actually. Code enforcement. And there was one. No, I think it might have been for the buildings manager position. Phone system, did I circulate? So I don't know if you guys remember. But last year we received a proposal, so right now we have. A ph- a phone system that goes through the. The copper lines. And that is how much it costs. To go, I don't, to go. Yes, would be a third of that. Including the equipment.
Yeah, we should switch. I think that. At the time when we got that presentation. I don't. We're in the middle of a lot.
Yeah.
Of other. Changing things and we, I think. At that point, just right, I was the sweet little lady rep who's been our rep forever that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we were.
I want to say at that point, I think we're like, all right, once we get the website done, since this isn't, doesn't have to happen, it's not like it's obsolete.
Yeah.
At the end of the year, we had an end date, we decided to not. Um, pursue it then, but I'm, yeah.
And after, after we, that includes like the cost, the phones. Without one, if you're using phones after, I forget what the term is, I think that might be eighteen months and you own them. And then it's like half that. So. Um, I think we should, so the first, I can, we can reduce that line for now and I can put it in yellow because. The I have to have them test to make sure we have enough. Um, then, yeah.
Right, so why don't we change it to ten thousand for now, drop it by five, because I'm sure there'll be some type of setup and some of the equipment and other reason.
No, it's all inclusive of what I just told you. So let's. Yeah, but but I'm gonna put it in yellow because I, we do have a contract.
Yes, yeah, and.
Yeah.
Contract that type of stuff. I think that this whole section, like obviously our email's going up because we're switching to.
This is gonna, yeah, as soon as we get this, it'll be that this year and then it'll be that this year.
Yes, yeah, and then same with the websites.
So that's for the licenses or all.
We are definitely. I think that, yeah, this section's all, this is our communication.
Wait, I think so, let me just make sure that's right. What did we say that?
The what?
Three? Thirty-three?
Oh, how many people?
Thanks for coming. Thank you. Thank you too.
I think we may need to end up going. Full licenses for everyone.
Can you pull up the?
Yeah. How fast is it? Brackets that we're trying to decide.
Thirteen, I think it might be fourteen thousand versus eight thousand.
Yes. Thirty-four. Accounts, so.
But I'm also, there's also the setup. Fee that, like the work, and I don't know if I'm including my.
Oh. I think that's like three thousand.
Ooh.
Why?
Yeah.
We should still be close though. We may want to increase it.
Yeah. If we do that. That's the price they gave us would be.
Can we like leave a mark to come back to this? Because this is for. Microsoft?
And we, so we got.
Isn't there a software one and then no?
I don't think so.
That's it, that's.
Well, I think we should put it at ten.
I think we should put it at ten, but I'm pretty sure there's a stop.
Because I have a specialty. Non-profit Microsoft access now. And I'm wondering if municipalities are also eligible for the same type of. Oh, right.
They do, we did try to get government pricing, but still.
It's also, I wonder, did we ask if there's? The, if the email, if. In order to have email, it has to be. The license or. I see what you're saying, but it's split because we don't need the apps or. Like. Or it's.
Yeah, what I wasn't, was what I wasn't, when you get email regardless, what I wasn't sure about was. For the security stuff.
Yeah, it's the security stuff that.
You get that at the premium.
Yes.
Somebody's gonna have an email that's.
We do want all this, that's like the opposite of just saying controllers recommended.
Yeah.
Like, I think we have to do that.
So we do have six thousand in software.
Okay.
So.
So. Um, we're doing central printing and mailing.
So we're leaving that, we left that?
I put it at ten. So we reduced phone system by five and we increased email by. So tentative, so overall we were, what?
We have the six in the software category. Or we can lower the software category.
But that will, that could be.
Okay.
I don't know.
What, which is seventy-five hundred?
The uh, website instead of ten thousand, why would you just say seventy-five? Since we think some of that's.
That's email, that's the email and we have eight thousand budgeted.
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry.
And I think it's gonna be closer to ten.
Yeah, no, that's fine, sorry.
Um. And. Is that? Did we already do the municipal code?
That was somewhere else.
That's town board?
Yes, yes.
So supplies, so central printing and mailing, supplies and materials. Feel like this is where you guys shine is. Messing with these numbers, so. I did.
Is the, are the posters machines going up? Is that where that increased so much? Oh, never mind, sorry.
Yeah. Oh.
And my like curse, it's like highlighting the wrong line, telling it might like saying the wrong lines.
Let me pull up, do you guys want me to pull up our, the detail report of? Expenditures?
No, that's okay. So our leases, they're like non-negotiable, they're gonna. Go to one hundred percent for the year, those lines, no matter what, right?
Yes. Um, that, though, I can find the. Aaron, do we? I know, kind of know the answer to this. Already. What, is there anywhere? In our buildings that we can safely store a whole pallet of copy paper? We could do that if we split it.
Between building like. Like there's certain things like that, like a pallet of copy paper from Staples is like.
I think that's what Stephanie ordered the last time she bought it, because it was like a big ordeal to get it inside the building. Well, I don't have a.
Well, the doors might not be four feet wide.
I mean, tens of thousands of pounds of food.
You have double doors then.
Once you're in the building. The entrance is still an old town hall entrance. Um, but uh.
Hallway, we have it, copy paper stacked all along the. That hallway is just stacked.
But yeah, there's just, I really, I. I think that for central printing, I think that we can definitely cut some of these little. At least. Copy paper. I think we could definitely at least bulk up some of it. And if that's. At least close to where we're at still within like a hundred, like I think we can cut it down by at least two fifty for that line and. Like try to order two key words of copy paper before end of year.
I do think that that budget line got messed out.
Okay.
Because that didn't include the most recent quarter.
I still want to do an audit of our.
I agree.
In general, um, just because so many different ways we can get discounts on these things, like I. What I do for pantry, like I don't pay full price for anything that I buy, even if it's not food. Um, and like between subscribe and save, different types of memberships or discount types we can take advantage of here, like. We should not be paying full price for any type of paper supply. Whether that's like copy paper or toilet paper, we should not be paying full price for the scale that we not care. So I really.
I I do too, I, um, what I was gonna say, one of the reasons why I increased. Or why I kept. Copy, so I. Even, I would like to, we are planning on doing more print communication. And um, so I was like, even if we can get a better deal on paper, I think. We will want to be using more. So I think keeping it there because we wanted to do these like.
Yeah.
We can do a lot of really amazing in-house printing. And we're not utilizing that as a communication. We can, and I know how to do it now. But the ink had gotten dry, so.
We gotta utilize that advantage for every.
But they include that six thousand bucks.
No, I know. Um, but I do, I can.
They'll let us order. Welcome to the year for nineteen.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, I totally hear you with that, Aaron. I just feel like I haven't cut enough today. That's why I was like.
No, I know, I know. I know, um, okay, so I'm gonna leave that. Yeah, the suppo- I actually, we could maybe. Cut those supplies and materials, but. Gonna put this in yellow.
I mean, let's cut it, let's cut the supply.
We went over this year.
It's easy to go over when you have the money in the budget.
Well, we did, but we didn't. Budget was.
I still went over.
I think, Aaron, are we allowed or?
No more paper books. One staple.
We're talking about how to make these very. But well, am I allowed to what? Break these down by department? Oh, I know, right? Like postage, supplies, and materials, like do you have, there's different ways of doing this. No, I, I do.
Because I feel like these, like all of these, we need to look at like supplies and materials, copy paper, the software, like, I feel like we need to look at just those.
Yeah.
Line items from each.
My vision.
Because I feel like they're never. Even in a perfect world with the most diligent of budget officer and bookkeeper. I feel like they're never gonna truly. And kill it like. Actually reflect and be able to budget off them, you know, unless you look at them.
It also makes it hard for the public.
Yes, yeah, it makes it, it makes it so much harder for people to follow this. Outside, like.
Do we know how many times like supplies and materials? Separate item.
Ten. So that, in that line. Is all of our envelopes.
So we'll save it at a thousand because we want. Is that why we went over?
Yeah.
Because we get all those notices.
Yeah.
I know too.
No, we have the ones, there's like the window envelopes. Though I am gonna do an audit of. Might stop. And then there's some ink in here. Maybe we went over because some things should have been. Coded to the court that were coded to this line. Oh no, that got taken out.
And can you move the page? You kind of tried to control our supplies and materials.
Oh, we are on, if you're in, are you in the, what are you doing?
I'm just.
Oh, Michael, what page are you on?
Voices.
Okay. Great, so we're just gonna leave that.
Yeah.
Okay, so central data processing. But it's this. Software sixteen eighty. Think that.
Like the docu, the docuware.
Those are our, you're right, those are the licenses. Those are our licenses.
Yeah, I know. Who's you told me that?
So. The number that we had included, that ten thousand dollars includes. These licenses.
Yes.
So if we leave it where it is. Um, that could include, that could be the near map.
Yeah, unless there are additional migration charges.
After this year? Let's just bump that to seven. To.
Because we are at sixty-nine hundred.
Yeah, and let me just see if I'm finding. Spot for it. I don't know.
You know, I think there's seventeen hundred somewhere for us to purchase at the beginning of this year, right?
Purchase what?
The near map, because there's, unless anything else has come out of the software line, we won't spend two hundred.
It's an annual, it's annual, so if we buy this year, we'll just buy again this year.
If we get it in November, we're doing next. The, the Microsoft stuff.
But this. We, this software. Yeah, near map is annual. We, hold on, we budgeted eight thousand this year for the. So what I'm talking about is next year's budget, we will be using that five thousand. This year. For the. For the licenses.
Okay, gotcha.
Because we hunted thirteen thousand whole. Eight. In the other line and five here and I'm just, we can, I can split it out. In the other line and five here, and I'm just, we can, I can split it out. But I think that this, I guess what I was thinking is, um, because we put. Ten.
Mm-hmm.
In that line, that, I was just thinking about the, the near map. But I actually don't think this is the appropriate budget code.
Because it's central labor.
Yeah, I mean.
But the thought was that near map that we used.
Share by every program, but I, I don't know that that's. I think it would go with. I mean. That might be the most appropriate place for it, but.
I mean.
I'm gonna leave it.
There, we can always do.
Because I have an idea that I could see about. Funding for it. Something that's utilized by. All.
And then the.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking is that, not that there would be grants for assessors, but. Their money for.
Absolutely.
For environmental. Conservation. I don't know what areas aren't covered, so. All we know. Two thirds of that one third could be the gunks and.
And then the. That, um, the professional services is Zoom on a job.
Well, we wouldn't need Zoom. That's not that much.
I will, we'll leave it, but I guess you're right, you can stream from Teams.
That is gonna affect our license, because we have two committees who guys aren't seeing committees.
They are, they are included.
Oh, they are, right.
I was just wondering if you could say.
Oh, gotcha, because. I said, I could say by only doing one email for each. Committee not allowing all members to have one, just doing one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think. We don't need to pay for licenses for. Finishes.
Um, okay, so. I'm gonna, for, for unallocated insurance, I need to get the actual for that. I'm gonna make that yellow. Oh, shoot, I've had the municipal association dues and I didn't bring it with me. It went up.
Is that Association of Towns dues? Just give a train. Wondering if there's any untapped folks from the Association of Towns, that's what I'm wondering.
That's all of them, so this is magistrates, New York Planning Federation, Assessors Association. Clerks, town, highway, so this is everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
So that's why it's so much. So I think that should be good.
Or they probably won't.
Because that's basically what. There is an increase, so. Okay. And this judgment claims, we just check out nineteen fifty. How you guys doing? Much.
Just keep going.
Okay.
Contingent, whether you.
Yeah, yeah.
Judgment claims county and town real property tax to do, okay. For. I don't know that we have to have contingent. But you want to keep it at twenty?
Yeah, exactly.
Use it this year.
Have we had to use this, have we used it any year prior to this?
Yeah. I think so, that's why it's, uh, it's always zero. When you amend the budget and move it, then it shows up as zero, these are not the. These are not the, well, I'm saying it's possible, we'd have to go back and look at some published.
I found them. You didn't use it like version two?
Let's see this.
Yeah, I have to, I'm gonna use it this year. But the other thing is, like, I, I have been. Tracking our actual expenditures versus budgeted and planning on that fund balance. To go into next year's budget, so I have been doing. That, so in terms of like maxing out. Um. Certain lines, some of them I'm planning on zeroing out, um.
You can just say that to Mayor. Try to figure out what we can buy.
Okay. Public safety, we're doing, um, on Tuesday, hopefully. Um. So we'll skip over that, traffic control, road signs, what do you think of that number, Michael?
No, I thought about signs.
Twenty twenty-three just. Gotcha. Wait, why, oh.
Yeah, I mean, sure.
Do we have a plan for many a sign? They, I don't know, we, they're definitely.
You pay for all the signs.
You pay for all of them.
Every.
So I just placed a big order, actually.
You know, because you have to put a parking sign every five feet.
I'm not sure, I haven't gotten my quote yet, but I did just place a big order. Uh, no parking, municipal, more signage in the municipal lots. No parking, um, the yield signs. Or voicemail, like we've been talking about, um, some no parking signs for the transfer station. I ordered the right to form signs, but those are coming out of the. I committed budget. So I'm not sure. I, I doubt that it's a. Thirty seven hundred dollar order, but, um.
Let's leave it at six.
Okay.
I mean, it feels historical though. Historical. Over five, except for twenty twenty-three. Spent an exorbitant amount on signs. Crazy.
So six or five?
Leave it six.
All right. Um. This. I just did the, um. I just tracked. Expenditures.
Did we not do professional services?
That I did. I put that under, um, equipment.
Okay, gotcha. We'll say, again, I think we should encourage, um. The department, I guess, I mean. Money in the budget left end of November, December to for supplies, like I know that, like, she comes in just treats and peanut butter and. Things like that, they're totally shelf safe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's a small enough little thing to, yeah, a supply and office for, I think, so just for a couple hundred dollars there.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
What kind of pro services?
That's why I asked.
Um, I'm gonna look at, we haven't used any of this sermon, let me look up last year. I'm pretty sure that.
I think that's when we take, we have to take them to a vet, Michael. And then, I, I asked this last year. And then that was lying.
Thank you.
That seems photo. Doesn't, that's not covered by.
Skew side.
If it's a tank, you know, for that.
He's both ready, I. Yes, it's, uh, just. A vet. I think we just have a good. Great. Um. So, anything that you guys think should be changed here?
No.
No. And then that. I think I did. Just that, the flat.
Was there something on the revenue side that Kate talked about increasing?
Yeah.
Lot of license.
Although it's also like a fine.
Yeah.
People.
Oh, yeah.
Leaving their dogs.
We would have to do a local.
But that's all right, because that's the one. I think that's what, I think that one was local, all the other one was just.
Yeah.
Fine schedule.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think that's true.
Whatever, whatever this thing is when people leave their dogs.
Over.
In, in the town instead of boarding it.
Yeah, whatever. I get abandoned.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that is, um, that is a, a net zero or that is a. Uh.
Neutral.
A neutral, yeah, if it. Happens. It's, um.
Reversible.
It's, there's an equal, it doesn't happen, but there would be an expenditure and a revenue that would be the same. I actually don't know why.
Like do the revenue for this?
No, I don't know why we have to put it in the budget, because it's not.
I don't think we should.
I, I just wanna know why. Where can you spend this this year?
Well, there's a revenue, there's a non, the revenues, this is why I'm saying I don't know that, why we should have put it in the budget. Because we can't spend this, because.
This is.
There's an expend, there's a revenue line that matches this, so it's not like.
That's in the budget already?
Yeah. If the, if this doesn't happen. Then I think it's where. We. If this doesn't happen, then the revenue doesn't. It's like only if you have a demo push.
This is, this is like a building is unsafe and the owner of the building is not. Able to take it down or isn't taking it down, and then the town.
We take it down and then they.
And then we get reimbursed. Yeah, I don't understand. I don't understand why we even have it on the revenue side.
Yeah, it could just be like a zero, doesn't. And the way. The way I've done that this year is like when we had to buy that truck, you just have to do a budget mod for revenue and expenditure.
But I mean, it doesn't, doesn't make a difference in terms of the amount that we collect in taxes.
No, no, that's what I was.
It's just, and taxes being collected, and then this, you start to take down the farm, that was the case was all.
No, it's not for our us.
Even though we're.
Even though it's unsafe.
There's just a. I did, well. Should, should we try and sell some town property?
No, let's see.
Not that one, but I'm here for some.
Okay.
Especially since we can't go down.
Can't build that, you can't build that new?
I have what, what I've been told from, at least Aaron's predecessor for three years in every housing site.
You would lease it?
Meeting, because in every county.
Okay, true. So. Okay. So we did the register vital statistics. So this, the ambulance, that should be zero. That we've corrected that. Um. That is where, that's the budget code where, because they use our fuel. Um, and then we send them a bill. And that has now, it's, that budget item, that budget code zeros itself out, so this just was, um, it.
Legacy.
Yes, so that should just stay at zero for that, okay? Um, transportation. We did review. We did that and then street lighting. That was just my estimate there. Um, and so we, so social services.
I'm not sure who, but essential.
Us, the town?
Yeah, isn't that, that's, this is all caught up before this.
Yeah, we're caught up. Um, home relief. What, do you know, is this the?
To kerosene?
Is it?
I don't know, there's supplies and materials, I wonder if it's kerosene, we need the bill.
I think that that. No, this is, I think, because, only because, I only think it's, um.
Elder care?
Yes, elder care, because the constables were once listed under here.
Yeah.
And. That was a little more fall, so we're, what, how was in the council was there, so I think, I would assume that this is.
Well, they made a request, right?
Yeah, um, no, I put that in there. Yeah, I would assume, so that's also where I'm. All right, I made it yellow. Um, okay.
Nothing's ever hit that one for me.
Okay. Do you know that if the housing committee wants to use their money for anything?
Uh, I want to use. Money for these, some things, there should be printing that. Money for these some things, they should be printing that contract. Yeah, there's definitely some printing, um, I can see, I can let them know and ask them. Started that workshop when I saw it.
I'm meaning to reach out to you guys because I'm like. Maybe there's something with this consultant or maybe there's like a professional service or. Oh, we can back up. This I put in because this was for the real estate transfer tax community preservation plan. I put in that, I put in ten thousand dollars if we wanted to plan on having some. Time for that, I also plan on applying for that grant.
Some time, what do you mean?
To, we're gonna edit the plan.
What's the cost of here?
I don't know, but hopefully it's not twenty five thousand dollars.
No, do we need anything?
We, I don't, uh, if we hire, we can, you guys can take it out. Um, but this is, this would be hiring someone to do any community planning.
So I would like us to leave that in there. Because. Knowing there's twenty five hundreds in there, so one of the like challenges that I didn't get. Or about yet was the housing site inventory and us having eighty square miles in town. Is after Heritage, when I gave tour, it was two hours and we maybe saw two thirds town. Um, for the scope that the county applied for and their RFP for this. Is a lot smaller than what these consultants typically do for a township, um, in the. Price range we are locked at from the county contract with them. So we're only actually air, able to go and like hone in on two. Areas of town to do actual like design. Hone in on an actual site for potential housing and to do the housing study on, so I. Would like with fourth blessing to go get a quote to see if we can. Expand it to more of the area or maybe we can have consultants come up and at least do another try. Have them thought to do another tour to see the rest of town. So that they can get a full picture of it, like there's only so much intel. Parcel viewer, you know what I mean, cause.
Near Mount.
That's right, send it to near.
So would that be for twenty twenty five?
Um, I don't, no, I can see how quickly they can get me stuff, I think it's like adding on to the scope that they're working on. So I'm gonna see if maybe it's ready. To like have twenty five hundred billed for the rest of this year and then whatever else billed for next year. Cause the scope's gonna go into next year anyway with all of this work, I believe. So.
Are we talking about the professional services right now?
I'm talking about housing committee kinda combining the professional services, cause it is technically a professional service as a consultant. The housing committee itself. You know what I mean? That's why I'm saying I think we should leave the ten thousand for now and see if I can maybe get an answer from Tiffany. Cause I know when we first did the contracts, we asked about. That of the applicants of the town was able to like. A la carte add on more services to the scope. Once the project started and they had said yes, so I'm gonna see. I mean, mine, that was two years ago. I don't think it's gonna be ten grand, but I know that right now what we're getting is about three times that value. So I think that. Even another five, just to try to get one more area for us to look at, because we have such a diverse. Zoning in the community and we're doing all these zoning changes that they're gonna have, that they're gonna, much part of their review is to look at the zoning changes. Yeah. Recommendations, I think that. To see if we can add something like that on like a full recommendation of the zoning code or.
I think that's, I think every, I think every other professional service we want for this budget line, which. I know we haven't made any decisions, but comprehensive plan, um, the other one is the one I just listed. All of those have, like I would wanna pursue the grant funding for those, so. I'm gonna put that on the priority list for December. Cause I think we should just, if we get the funding for those things, then we can do it and if we don't, then we don't. So we don't necessarily need to budget those, so I, I'll, I've put it in yellow just as a, to remember. But I'm okay with leaving that and the little bit of printing. That they, that I did, I just did that from. From, yeah, from, okay, cause. Cause that literally, it's five cents for color sheet, so it's like. Twelve times five, sixty cents.
Move on.
Okay. Again, but I'll ask them first. Okay, yeah, I think if you, copies of the survey, just tell us and we'll just copy them. Cause those are like one cent. Okay. Um, oh, my favorite. This is fun. So this, we did most of already? So, do you guys, should we finish? What do you guys think? Finish this page and then have a discussion about pay? Or do you wanna try and get through just more? Lines. Before we go to executive. We need to, I'd like to have, I'd like to have a more complete pay scale that I will present to you guys next week. And I wanted to talk about it.
Let's, let's finish page thirty five.
And then we'll, and then we'll break for planning board.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I also would like to, I forgot, I wanna schedule, I wanna reschedule our audit for Tuesday. Well, it's gonna be a budget meeting.
Together, we're doing it all together.
Yes, anyone who can come in. At any time. Okay. So, so parks. I kept the park grounds rail trail stipend in. Um, and did not add an eight percent increase. I personally feel like it's been going pretty well this year and. The things that we don't have coverage for, I'm gonna be. Writing into. The. Position, and so splitting some of, there's a couple things in this. That we, that haven't been getting. Done, but I'd like to move, shift that work over and just the mowing, the big. The rail trail, the park, the big mowing, like have that be still under this. What do you guys think?
I think that makes sense. Did you give this the same increase as everything?
Yep. Um, okay, so for this, for the equipment, what, so the, we didn't talk about the proposal. What, what do you guys think?
So, um. I really liked Ashley's proactiveness when it came to this and like coming fully prepared. With multiple plans and viewpoints on it. I think it's important to have a committee forum for the, for the back park and to also. Seek public input, like we should have at least one type of public thing, at least after like a de- design phase at least. Or beforehand, but we should get something public input. Whether it's from the kids at the community center. Or the ones who are gonna use it the most or what they want back there or whatnot, but we should get a little outside input also. And I do wanna look at just because. Since Ashley and the rec, um, committee brought up the idea of a park. redoing the equipment and doing a park back there, um, I've been looking at playground equipment, um. And I would love to serve on the committee, cause as a kid, they grew up at this building playing here, I have a lot of ideas and I really wanna make it. There's a few playground equipment wise, I like the layout that Ashley presented to us, um, but just the actual equipment, I really love, there's some. Really cool inclusive equipment that's out there now, that's not part of the one Ashley got closed out. Um, and I also want my pirate ship, like Michael mentioned. But I also love the idea of it potentially being like how they have, um, they have tractors and like farmer market. Being playgrounds and things like that, that's used to be an ag way to see if we can find some type of ag. Related equipment to be in the back, so it's almost like a storage park too or a history park.
Mm-hmm.
At the same time. And my only other point with this is, um. I know on this weekly deal about grants and I know we can't budget them unless we know you're, like you know, we have a project. That we're applying for, for it and. This location and this project would qualify for at least fifty five percent matching grant from USDA rural communities grant program. Um, a grant or loan, so no matter what, it's pretty much guaranteed, once you apply, um. But you just have to go through like the process, a pretty intense application process, like most federal. Um, but I think that if we took this seventy five thousand of ARPA money that we appropriated. For this park project, that we could safely budget, since we're, I'm not sure if we're in the fifty five or the seventy five percent. Match guarantee, I think we could safely budget fifty five percent of that in the revenue and then if we don't get it, we don't. Or the, I'm sorry, forty, um, forty one thousand, which is fifty five percent. Um, and if we don't get it, then that cancels out, but it'll help us. Hopefully increase the size some more, and since we know we're applying for it, great, but if not, we have the seventy five ARPA to put. In it.
So. For, what were you thinking we would put in for the expenditure? For that, keeping it the same or?
I think we, I think we keep it the same because we know we're gonna spend seventy five. Thousand, but I'm not sure, I'm of you, cause like we know that that for sure appropriated. Are we able to budget the? Oh no, cause we have to have it in an hour and present.
So, what, what I've done is the. I, I put in a placeholder of seventy five thousand, we have a hundred twenty eight thousand dollars of ARPA money. That we have to put in this year's budget. So, I put that in as a placeholder. This number with the proposal that Ashley came to us with included some things that I have budgeted elsewhere. So, I was kinda thinking we might be able to lower it. And then I also. We, the, we spent quite a bit less on the playground equipment that we bought. So.
Less of those quotes?
Yes, and I don't know if it's time.
We put that together.
No. Well. The quotes included it, put together, I don't actually know what happened with that, I. There was something, there's the wood chips, um, but I was, and I don't know if there's like a state bid contract. For playground equipment that would be better pricing, so. I thought.
You wanna move it to like sixty?
Yeah, cause I know that this includes. Things that I was not thinking would be part of this. But to me, what I would like, that the remainder of the ARPA money needs to fund. General.
The actual losses that would have.
Yes.
Like we're reporting it while we're keeping it.
Yeah.
I'm here for it, um. Yeah, so. I'm fine with lowering that to sixty, are we able, Aaron, though, since we do have a guaranteed loan that we know or. Grant that we're going to apply for next year for matching with this county budget than like for the Nick as we. That for a match.
Thirty revenue, yeah.
Cause then if you don't get it, it doesn't. It just cancels out, it would be federal paid.
It would, though, if we don't get it, then we would kind of have a thirty thousand dollar loss. So in other, if we were to say. Plan to do a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project. And put the grant funding in and if we didn't get the grant, we'd only do a sixty thousand dollar project, that's where we could.
Yeah, we'd need to increase the CIA, I wasn't driving the.
So. I'm writing a note though for them, cause we can, we can circle back to that. But what we would do is. We would have to. In, yeah.
Oh yeah, I totally understand.
In the other places where if we were gonna apply for funding. And then if we don't get it, then we don't do the project. Whereas this, we are saying. We're still gonna do the project, but wouldn't it be great if we got the funding? If we didn't get the funding, then we would have a shortfall of thirty thousand dollars. So it'd be better to.
Yeah, just cut this, leave it. Yes, or on the same page.
Okay, okay, so. This. Section is where we have, uh, so that twenty thousand dollars that we haven't spent. We can use for the fence. I'm sorry, that's the last.
I'm fine with that, it's in.
And in, I put in ten thousand. I think I was just looking at. I think that was a placeholder because I wasn't sure in terms of the park. The, our current park, we talked about doing some improvements. And we were, uh, we have the rail trail. And then, also we've been talking about buying a shed for the back area. So. The fence quotes were less, way less money though.
So. Yeah, I see that's, that's under that, um, I'm also, what I think I asked was when Ashley was here. They have equipment going into that line since August, right, for this year? Only at three.
Oh, you're looking, yeah, this. You, that. Was.
Okay, right.
Your name.
Dollar change there, I'm saying like. Then maybe like order something.
Yeah, I actually have that in another code, I was gonna do that from another code. This one I might, I was gonna move, actually you'll. This one I might, I was gonna move, actually you'll see in a second. I have to move this to another budget code, you're gonna see that miss. But I don't know what that was supposed to be for. Cause I don't have notes. Oh, that was. Okay, well, something will have to move from here, ten thousand dollars has to be down to.
From one of the programs.
Oh, yeah.
Right, the basketballs, something along those lines, it was like.
Yeah.
But it was something along, I, I, it might not have a basketball, so that might not be the right thing, but it was something along those lines where it was like more. A very popular specific program that we did. That they were planning on having to do something. Yeah, I think that that was. But if there's any money left there, I do think we should at least try to. Actually. If there is actually any. You said you're moving that in here.
What, what were you gonna say?
You're moving the equipment line?
I have to move, I think I'm gonna move. Whatever's left over after we ordered the fencing. To the swim line, because I didn't catch it, so I was doing the budget, but we only budgeted twenty thousand and we gave thirty. And so I need to, that, I'm just letting you know, there's. Um, ten thousand that I need to move to cover an expenditure that already happened. That should have been caught in January's, but I didn't catch it till I was doing.
Um, the, so I'll get back to the equipment line, um, that one's not moving though. That five thousand right now for this year, the one with three ninety-nine.
We only have three ninety-nine out of it, um, and I'm not sure, I was hoping, I spoke. Ashley and I had another conversation about sheds, and what we're talking about is putting. A bigger one on that pad now, and so I was gonna get quotes for. She kind of told me what size she was looking for, and that's one of the reasons why we budgeted for, um. Carts. Was so that they're how, cause it'll be farther away.
Yeah, I remember that.
So it could, but what we're thinking is gonna be more than five thousand dollars. So the wiggle room I have. Is. That four sixty and then that, um. I made that operation and maintenance line. But if we order the fence. This year, then there's less in there, but. We could also just budget for the fence next year and then move that code around for what we need for this year.
I just really want the barbecue at the.
Oh, so then we can replace. How much does that cost?
I think the last time I looked, so I was just hoping that we could maybe get anyone, it's, the tray underneath isn't. I only know from my Mrs. Had a bar, or a birthday party there over the past two years and.
Okay.
One of your rain in trying to cook.
I see.
And like that, it's just, it's also not very safe, it's very rusty, very sharp edges. Little ones running around, so. I would love if like safety wise, we could get that one fixed, if there's a little wiggle room there, or at least order it to have it replaced in the spring before the park. Goes into its. Any sharp metal.
Of our parts. So the professional services line. Is. I feel like maybe I can reduce. Because. Well, I don't know why we budgeted ten thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, that was the kiosks. And. That was, in twenty twenty-three, we spent eleven thousand dollars, and that was the kiosks. That was. An electric. An electrician. And it was New York Piano Works, I guess.
I think I remember that, the piano getting tuned.
Two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Sounds good.
I, electrician. Was that one the generator, right? Right, when there's something with that?
I'll have to look that up.
There was some, I remember some. Something else, but it'd be a false one.
I mean, I, I put in five thousand because it was like in between, but in twenty twenty-two, we only spent fifteen hundred dollars. This year, we haven't spent any.
Let's, let's just drop it to three thousand.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay. I think that's just if we need to. We're, there ain't no professional.
It's any repairs to this building?
No, this is, um.
Yeah, it's three.
Okay, but then rent lease. Zero. I don't know why it was.
Yep.
Okay, and then operation and maintenance, this is the one. Um, that I was just talking about. I. Feel like we're trying to invest more in the park, so. I don't wanna like put that at zero, um. But I don't actually have like a set plan.
We're gonna be doing the. Bathroom, something else might come up for the part.
Yeah.
Or do something.
We're gonna have to have.
And I know that that's personnel.
Yeah.
Depending contractors, I don't know, like they're reported currently. But something, we're gonna need it for something, or one of them between the two, whether.
Okay. So this one, okay, so it's the Carhawson pool.
I think it's all this.
The only thing I got a, is this senior citizen living in this one? Oh, no, that's the next page. Okay. Okay, um, band concerts, do you guys wanna leave that or?
On another page, yeah, we'll be moving to another page.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in Excel. Do you wanna end at band concerts?
Why, yeah, that finishes that section.
Okay, great, okay.
Program.
Let's do that left one.
Band concerts.
Band concerts. Do we wanna put that in as a thousand or put that in a zero and just move more money over to the celebrations lines?
Yeah, I think you can zero that out.
Okay.
I see you guys.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Here again, next Tuesday.
Okay, that, that's the last line we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cause then, yeah, that one, that's a good start.
While we did, so it's eight forty-five, that was when I had scheduled us to end the live session. So we're not gonna talk about the pay scale.
I mean, let's.
Basically, all I wanted to, you guys have been seeing where we're at. This isn't really anything, it's just showing you what the eight percent is, and. I have rounded things like tier four, I put in it twenty-five fifty. Um, tier three, I put in it twenty-three seventy-five.
So these, one thing I noticed was. This didn't seem to align before we had like the aid position.
It didn't, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
Wait, which doesn't?
The, the annual.
The one we just were looking at, right, cause I put in their budget request.
Okay.
Which for the aid. Position, that would be at tier three, but assistant assessor would be. Tier four, if we're in their budget request.
Oh, I guess assistant. Yeah, I was thinking deputy assessor, like they said originally, and I was like, oh, that seems more.
And whereas the. Assessor, that's why I was confused, because the assessor field worker is a like tier two. Um, and that's why I got confused, but they clarified that by talking about a different job.
Yes, we agree, it's actually, they wanna change Joanne's job and put someone for.
Or into the field worker position, but we're not gonna do that this year. So, um, I just wanted to, there. The assessor position also does. Match with this, um, the, I put in my proposal, constables. They're not in, it's not in this spreadsheet, but in my proposal, the constables, the, the like. Unnamed position, the as yet unnamed position is in tier. Six. At twenty-eight fifty is where I have that in the budget. And the other, the constables regular are in tier four at twenty-five fifty an hour. So we'll be looking at that on Tuesday. The, I have the, um. So. We have, um. The building. So one thing that I didn't budget for was the planner, which is one of the reasons why. I was hesitant to add a third position. Um, because I didn't include that in the budget, it was a mistake. So. I don't know. I don't know where to put that. I, I think it should be like thirty dollars an hour. So that would put us at. The.
Which positions?
Six.
Just it's slightly under, it's a brand new position, it's gonna be part-time, so you can see.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, where it's at, and if it seems like we have a high turnover or something and we need to increase it up to.
Some longevity or something, I think we can.
I think to pay us to our other. Employ, we shouldn't make another tier, or weird, you know what I mean?
Well, we're gonna have, we are gonna have that actually. Because the municipal code aide and the building inspector. Are us, it'll be at thirty. But I'm fine with what you're saying.
Yeah, it's not that I don't doubt that a pimp plate is a skilled position, I just don't. Just created the zone coordinator move that yet, like I just wanted to start, I don't wanna make a specialty here, third position at all, I'm saying, I don't.
Where are you going?
Scanning the picture.
If you leave the room, we have to stop the meeting, so I was. Sorry.
Where are you going?
I thought the same thing, I was like.
Um, okay, I think, and then the, um. The.
Still here. Just letting people.
The, um. The buildings manager. Um, I have that. I should put the tiers in the budget, so that. I have that at the tier six. Buildings. That's a new position that's not here, so that would be the twenty. We don't have a name, I mean, I actually do have a name for that, not.
And what does our. We won't know our building laborers.
Oh, I have it, it's in, it's in the budget, um. Yeah.
I'm just, I just wanna make sure it's, the, the, the wage, I know that they're. Part of the union, but I wanna make sure that it's still in a properly, a huge gap between supervisor and.
Yes, that one will be at, um, I didn't put it in here, cause it's in the contract, um. It's gonna be.
I guess yeah, it's not union, sorry, I'm trying to think if that's big enough. That's three fifty, three seventy approximately of a wage difference between a laborer and then a. It's a hard one to try to.
Figure out the balance on.
Uh, cause laborers, unions, that. I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Overall, I think that's fine, um, I.
So. Yeah.
But yeah.
The transfer station. I'm actually gonna put, I would, I put those in at twenty-one. Um, and then I funded only three of those and then put in for the transportation operator. Which. Is gonna be. I think I put that actually in another tier. We haven't heard these.
Not here too.
I think I bumped it up because I didn't think it was gonna be. Cause I think I put those at twenty-two seventy-five. It's only one person. And like, maybe we get rid of tier two. Like. I don't know.
Didn't we talk about that last year?
We did, I think I tried to do it last year, this isn't that much of a difference. Kind of a weird, it's like. Dollar, but.
I kinda get it though, I get the ones that are in tier two. And why they're there.
Yeah.
Not so much the operator, but. The ZVA and planning board, because it's. Not as. Praying intensely, I guess, the best one for it. You know, of a, compared to some of the other part of position in town.
Yeah. Okay. Well.
This all will come.
Great, I'll make, um, so. I will, but do you guys want me to put in? The schedule that I'm gonna submit to you ahead of next, our next meeting? Do you like the way I did, so in our budget, I did, the twenty-five thirty-eight, it's twenty-five fifty. For the fire inspectors, I think I put those at six. For tier six, I did, uh, twenty-eight fifty. For. Then we have, there's another one that's gonna be at like thirty-one or thirty-two. And then everything else I just did. That recreation. Position that we talked about, that'll be actually in tier three.
Uh, after school.
Like the.
The lead.
Coordinator or. Okay, so I'll put that together, but did you guys, but so far the rounding, I've been doing a bunch of stuff on. Okay. Okay. All right, so I'll, I will get that too. Alright, so I'll, I will get that too. Um, let's stop talking about the budget. And. I thought, um, we should. Use. A executive session to discuss appointments. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to.
Um. We, and then we had, so we'll come, I'll stop recording. And then we'll have some more resolutions, cause we're gonna schedule, reschedule our meeting for next week and then have the grant. Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to enter into executive session at. Eight fifty two. In matters leading to the appointment for the persons.
Second. All in favor, um, I propose to abstain, motion carries.
I think someone probably. Initiation.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I put you also.
It was making more questions for it, so.